For the Housing.
Second.
The Housing Authority is adjourned.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have one more meeting.
Okay, go pull the permits.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Joint City Council and Redevelopment Agency Meeting for December 7th, 2010. May we have roll call for the council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And can we have roll call for the agency?
Agency members, Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the December 7th, 2010, Joint Public Meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, December 2, 2010, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Uh, thank you. This, uh, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and then go to Mr. Loomis.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, while Mr. Loomis is coming to the microphone. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to note that yesterday, we acknowledged Mr. Loomis for having achieved his five years of service with the City of Glendale.
Five?
It feels like a lot more, and I would suggest that's because he has accomplished so much in the five years he's been here.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Is the city manager suggesting that when it comes to planning staff, especially key planning staff, that perhaps we don't measure their, their time with us in years, perhaps in mileage?
I think it's dog years.
Dog years.
This afternoon was one year, I think. Thank you, Mr. Starwood and Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the agency. In the interest of being brief, I'm going to try and summarize a staff report that was been prepared by myself, legal staff, an F. Artanian, and Kristin Asp. This relates to the Urban Art Fund, which we just discussed a little bit as relates to the 200 East Broadway project. In the downtown specific plan, we require 1% of project cost to be dedicated to onsite public art. This is much like we require a certain amount of square footage be dedicated to open space. It is a development standard built into the plan. We allow developers to meet that development standard by paying an equivalent amount as an in-lu fee to an urban art fund. I think once 200 East Broadway submits their check to the Urban Art Fund, it will, I want to say, probably increase in value by somewhere in the vicinity of about 600% or something along those lines. There's no money, really no money in the fund right now. So that will change with 200 East Broadway. That is the policy in place in downtown. And starting in earlier this year, and we've had a number of study sessions with the council regarding extending that policy or modifying that policy to apply citywide. In August, the council directed us to extend that policy citywide to the commercial districts and mixed-use districts elsewhere in the city, and to increase that requirement for onsite art to be 2% of project value, or it could be met by paying the in-lu fee equivalent to 1%. The procedures and policies otherwise related to this proposed ordinance remain as they are in the downtown specific plan. That is to say, there's a series of exemptions related to affordable housing, projects, a majority of affordable housing, to projects involving adaptive reuse. Those exemptions would carry over to the rest of the city, with the exception that we are including auto dealers into the list of exemptions. For other policies related to economic development, potential and value of auto dealers, they're exempt from other fees, so we've proposed that they'd be exempt from this requirement as well. The way the onsite art proposal would be evaluated is the same, more or less, as it is in the downtown specific plan. That is, the art proposal or plan would be presented to the Arts and Culture Commission or other bodies designated by the council for an advisory review, and the final design review authority would have approval of the ultimate onsite art. In most cases, this will be the city council; in some cases, this will be the Design Review Board; and in a few limited cases, it will actually be the Director of Planning. And should we ever have a historic district that includes commercial property, it would be the Historic Preservation Commission. I want to note that we've had a few meetings and presentations with the Arts Commission as it relates to the implementation of the arts plan, in particular in regards to downtown specific plan. They have reviewed at least, have reviewed two different proposals for downtown specific plan projects. We have also included in this ordinance and adoption a series of guidelines that would relate to the application process for the arts plan, should a developer choose to submit an arts plan, how they would, what they would need to submit, who, how it would be evaluated as part of the guidelines. The guidelines also lay out some of the parameters for how the Urban Arts Fund could be managed. If you have questions about that, I'll defer those to an F. Artanian. And finally, the ordinance as currently drafted will apply to any projects outside of the downtown specific plan, which as mentioned has already been subject to an arts ordinance thus far. Any projects that have not yet pulled a building permit would be required to meet this requirement when it goes into effect. So in 37 days, should the council vote on this ordinance, any project not yet pulling a building permit would be required to either provide for onsite urban art or would be required to pay the fee. That is, as the ordinance is currently drafted. Of course, there are options to modify that should the council see fit. So with that, I think Kristin Asp can answer any questions about the mechanics of the actual ordinance language and the code, and F. Artanian can answer questions about the guidelines. I think our legal staff can answer any legal questions, obviously. But in the interest, I didn't want to defer to all them in the interest of trying to keep a brief presentation, so, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Let me go to the members of the public, Thomas Metzler, Gary Hart, Anne Marie Jones.
Well, our first speaker's coming up, I just wanted to apologize to those members of the public who came but had to leave because we had such a long meeting before this. So sorry you didn't get to speak, but thanks for coming.
It was interesting. My name is Thomas Metzler. I have run the Metzler Violin Shop over on Central Avenue for the last 31 years. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Glendale Youth Orchestra. I just found out about this meeting a very short time ago, so I haven't really prepared a statement, but I did want to register my strong support of some more city support of the arts, because for so, so long, the, the arts seem to have been invisible to the government here and vice versa. We, we once invited some city council members to come to the Glendale Youth Orchestra concert some, I think, eight or 10 years ago, and they didn't realize there was a Glendale Youth Orchestra. So I'm very happy that this has at least been considered this evening, and I do urge a yes vote on, on these principal, on these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hart, followed by Anne Marie Jones.
Thank you, I'm Gary Hart. I live here in Glendale, and I'm here in support of this measure also. I think for too long, Glendale has taken a backseat to not only Los Angeles and Long Beach, but smaller communities in the area, Pasadena, Culver City. I think when you look at what Culver City has achieved in just a very short time, the last 10 years or so, it's miraculous, and there's no reason why Glendale couldn't follow that path as well. I work in the book business, and sometimes when I'm in bookstores, I like to look at tourist guides to Southern California, and I'm afraid the listings for Glendale are always very short. We should be proud of what is there, Brand Library, Casa Dobby, the Alex Theater, but the lists are always short, and it's a list that I'm afraid doesn't make many people stop and take a look at Glendale even as they pass right through the city, going from Hollywood to Pasadena or from Pasadena to downtown Los Angeles. So I think this measure can not only benefit us as citizens of Glendale, but can help us capture some of those tourists and their dollars as well, so I hope you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie Jones. Arlene Vidor.
Good afternoon. My name is Arlene Vidor. I am a resident and homeowner in Glendale. I'm interested in the arts. I've served on the board of the Associates of Brand Library and Art Center for 10 years. I'm here to voice strong support for a yes vote on the agenda items discussed in 1A, B, and C. These are really much-needed enhancements for arts funding. It would finally enable our city to take its place, even take a leading position among other forward-thinking cities, some of them were just mentioned, like LA, Culver City, Long Beach, and Pasadena, that already recognize what a reliable and stable source of arts funding can do for their economies, not to mention the quality of life and the attractiveness of the community to outsiders. Arts funding has been sporadic, unpredictable, and almost nonexistent in Glendale in the past, and we're in fact pretty infamous around these parts for our relative lack of visible enthusiasm about the arts. Offering developers the two-tiered fee structure and the creation of the all-important general citywide arts fund is a really wonderful idea and a great way to spur creativity across a broad spectrum of professionals and private citizens, including the developers themselves, as well as fostering philanthropy in our community, of which we, we don't have a lot. The current state of the economy, I don't believe, is a reason to hesitate on measures so critical and comprehensive. This approach to funding is proven to attract visitors, new vibrant businesses, home seekers, and shoppers to a community, and ultimately, it's going to benefit the developers working here. And I think any developer who wouldn't see the benefit and envision what this could do for us probably shouldn't be working in a community like this. Maybe they should go develop in Vernon or the City of Industry or someplace like that. Citywide impact fees to support parks and libraries are extremely important, and they exist. Arts and culture, I believe, is just as essential to our future growth and development, and also is a mitigation of the negative aspects that invariably come with the growth that we would like to achieve. Yes, people say they want to come to the Galleria, they want to come to the Americana, but people do not say, "I want to go hang out in Glendale." They just don't. That needs to change now, and the urban arts program as proposed is a catalyst for that change. People who scoff at Glendale, and there are people who say, "Oh, you know, cultural backwater, oversized bedroom community," they would expect initiatives like this to be defeated. So please, let's really surprise the naysayers and thrill your constituents and vote yes. You hold the key to Glendale's future in your hands. Please don't drop it into the sewer. So thank you for listening, and hopefully, thank, thank you for your support as well.
Thank you, I don't have any other cards. Discussion. I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question.
Mr. Quintero.
And that has to do with the monies that the art fee would, as the money accumulates, what section of the city is going to actually be responsible for spending the money, and what percentage, if any, is going to go to what I would call capital programs? And by that, I mean, we have an ongoing commitment to the Alex Theater, we've got the Brand Library, I mean, we actually have, have venues that cost money to operate, et cetera, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this point, the legislation that's before you does not program how the money would be spent. It's just to put in the mechanism to collect the money. I think that will be subject of your discussion and the policies that you will set and the bodies that you will appoint to work with staff in the future to program the monies as, and per your direction, and they could be done through the procedures that we will put in place.
Mr. Starwood. If I can, I would anticipate, of course, a separate fund to account for the monies, separate from the other 61 funds of the city. And then annually, you're going to have a budget that will probably allocate it to specific broad categories, not specific projects, but kind of broad categories, in the same way you see, for example, your housing funds that are set aside, and you have categories of new construction, rehab, that sort of thing. I would expect you'd see the same thing each year as part of your budget, and the funds that are, that are already there and anticipated to be there in the upcoming year, then you'd approve broad categories, then you may get specific recommendations from, whether it's Design Review or Arts and Culture, to then approve specific projects as they come through.
Right, and just to mention, if I may, in the, in the guidelines of, as they're written, and that's not the ordinance, that's the guidelines, that staff has proposed as draft guidelines, right now, the city council or its designated body is the formal body responsible for administering the urban, urban art program. We, we kept it open because we think you may want to discuss that a little bit further in the future.
And there's no restriction at this point in the guidelines on whether it's for programming or for capital, if you can call that?
No, in fact, the language is written so that it keeps your hands open in terms of choosing those directions.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, it, just as a note, when we had been discussing this, as this concept has moved forward, that is exactly why we, we aren't tackling this, this part of it right now. There were a number of concerns expressed on the dais as to how these funds would be handled and, and to what venues or, or types of programming it would go. I know, and I can pay for, from my own opinion, this has to be something that is somewhat flexible, in my view. And so when it, when we come, when it comes time for that and we have that actual discussion, I'll be continuing to ask that we, we look at the use of these funds for both existing arts venues that are, well, economic liabilities that we're responsible for out of our general funds, such as the Alex Theater, Brand Library, and so on and so forth, as well as potential for creating new venues, programming in the arts, and so on. And since the funds are coming, or if this passes, will be coming citywide, we have to start thinking of a true citywide urban art, or a citywide art program, rather than thinking of it just as an urban art program downtown area. So, you know, I think it's both, is what I'm trying to say, and that was the consensus as we went along, but that'll all be determined with public input as well, so.
And I, I probably missed this, but the amount that is proposed is the 2% onsite, 1% in-lu, or are we going to 2% across the board?
1.
1.
1% in-lu, 2% onsite. And is there a discussion as to exempting car dealers? I know Planning Commission made an issue about who...
Draft ordinance before you actually has them as an exempt.
As an exempt.
Currently, but certainly the council could decide you don't want to exempt them. Right now, is the ordinance, the ordinance drafted that's before you?
Maybe, I don't know if they're ready to tackle that at this moment. Do you want to tackle that now?
Well, I think it is in there as an exemption right now.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for raising what the Planning Commission raised, because we, we should have made a point that the Planning Commission had some discussion, and they were not completely in favor of exempting the car dealers from this particular requirement, and they, they asked that you think about whether, you know, Harden, about whether or not you want to exempt the car dealers from this exemption. At the time, we explained to the Planning Commission that we know that for the car dealerships to expand to Class A car dealerships, they have to overcome several different obstacles, and at this point, we were, staff was not recommending to subject them to the, to this particular standard, because our first and foremost concern was to help them expand and increase their inventory so that they can compete regionally. However, the council has the option to, to exclude them from the exemptions list.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, let me say, my foremost concern is to expand car dealerships, the kind of tax base that it provides is the best, in addition to the jobs that they provide, good-paying jobs, mechanics, et cetera. However, I see no reason to exempt them from this art fee. It's just a business, and like anyone else, it may be a bigger business, provides a bigger tax base, but it's a business, so I think they need to be, and hopefully, over the years, as we've seen, from the BMW and the Lexus and other dealership, there's going to be more and more building going on, so.
And one could argue that a Ferrari on a pedestal is certainly art.
Would be, for me.
But, so that perhaps is a discussion that we can, we can have for a later, a later time. Mr. Weaver.
Okay. Now, these are my own comments, and I don't care to be challenged by my colleagues, because they're just my own opinions. I would first like to thank whoever orchestrated all the emails that I've received in the last two or three days, every single one supporting the arts, but maybe that was 25 out of population 207,000. So, none of those people, other wrote in and said they objected to it. I appreciate the emails in. I want people to understand, I'm an artist too. Belonged to the Glendale Arts Association for years, first one in the state of California, the Glendale Arts Association. We couldn't get out of the basement of the Glendale Federal Building to find any place to showcase art, so I do appreciate the arts, and I like music, and I like shows. Having said that, my own philosophy is, arts is great, but it's something, it's an amenity, it's something you add on after you do the basic things that a city needs. I grew up here, and we weren't known as an arts center. I know there's different areas of LA where and are art centers. I don't knock it at all. If we can do it in Glendale, fine, at the proper time. With technology evolving, you're going to see more people watching movies, everything in the comfort of their own home, less going out. Times are changing, and who knows what it's going to be in the future, but entertainment, as I said, or the arts are good, and adventure, I'd like to see anybody describe to me, or explain to me, what is art? Art is something different from everybody. You can look at certain painters, Picasso and other painters, some will say, "That is just beautiful." I'll look at it and says, "I don't see it at all, because I paint realistically. It has to look like a photograph when I draw." So, the art for everybody is different. Having said all that, I understand the concept of going from 2% downtown or in the, to pay for the art, which kind of drives most developers to go to pay the 1% fee that we want to get our hands on anyhow, so we can do things like, maybe for the Alex Theater, subsidize the Alex Theater, maybe part of this component could go to help on the subsidy, freeing up money that we otherwise have to put into it. And that could be an art component that I've heard we're talking about. Personally, I don't care for the statues of the horses on North Rand, and I don't care for Benjamin Franklin in the marketplace. I'd rather have that money spent in a better way. We have a hotel that's coming in, the one on California, is it? California and Central, they worked their art right into the design of the building, which I thought was quite nice, too. Who's applauding? What's going on out there?
We have people out on the front steps of City Hall that are demonstrating over something, we don't know what it is, we're trying to find out.
Us?
The arts. You in particular, Mr. Weaver.
I'm talking, and they're out there.
Is that what you said?
They're preparing to drag you naked through the streets, Mr. Weaver.
And the last thing, no, I do not care to see car dealers having to put up art, too. I look at a car dealership as a car dealership. Their buildings, Lexus and BMW, they've built their buildings, I think are very good architecture. Tell them they have to put a statue or something out in front, doesn't make any sense to me. They're one of our two biggest, thank you. They're one of our two biggest generators of sales tax in the city, and then turn around and tell them, "Well, now you're going to have to spend more money on art." No, I can't, I can't see that. I don't think I'll ever vote for that if it comes up, but I will support this because I know the genesis of it and what we're trying to do, build a fund so we can do things for the arts of Glendale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Friedman.
Well, to me, this is one of the most exciting issues that I've been able to vote on since I've been on Glendale City Council, and as long as I can remember, Glendale has never, as one of the speakers said, it's never been known as a city that valued the arts, at least in terms of its government. I think its people do, and have for a long time, but its government has never, has traditionally not supported it the way that other cities have, and I think this is a very clever way that we can generate funding for the arts that doesn't come out of taxpayer money or out of the general fund. Not that I would be against that, but I think that's a tougher sell with this council probably than this is. For a few years now, for a number of years, in the downtown area, developers have had to put a 1% of their budget towards public art onsite. It doesn't make sense to me that that wouldn't be citywide, as long as the benefit was also citywide, and giving them the choice of spending it on their own property at a higher rate or paying into this fund at a lower rate is a, a nice way to allow them to, if they want, spend that money onsite, get the benefit of improving their site through that art, or if they don't want the hassle of that and they don't want the expense, of paying into a fund that the city would then use. And that money, the arts, just like parks and libraries and other things that we do spend money on, directly relates to people's quality of life. It relates to children, and we had someone here from the Glendale Youth Orchestra who can attest to that. One of the complaints I hear from parents a lot is that there's not a lot to do for kids in Glendale. This is something that could be used for children's arts programming, as well as arts programming, you know, for, for the older people, for the rest of us. So, this would be, as far as I know, the first time that the city has set up a long-term program to fund the arts and hopefully really be serious about the arts in the city. And I've been just looking at analysis of what art spending does for cities, and the payback is tremendous, which is why you do see investment from other cities in the arts. It's not just because they like the arts, it's because if you actually run the analysis, which cities have done, that money comes back, because people who come to see the arts tend to spend money on restaurants, they often spend money on retail. Even retail establishments are recognizing the importance of having arts along with retail. And when I went to the shopping mall conference last year, something I never thought I would do before I got on City Council, I went to the shopping mall conference, and that was the big thing that they were talking about, was that retail alone does not bring people anymore. It's not enough. You have to provide that extra programming. The Americana is very smart. They provide arts programming, they provide all kinds of other things for people to do because they have learned, the smart retailers, that people don't come anymore just for the shopping, they come for that other stuff, and they shop when they're there, and they spend money when they're there. It's the same with cities. If you have a museum, if you have programming like a festival, a street festival, if you're, have an orchestra playing, if you have a movie showing, you get people into your city, maybe people who don't even live in your city, and they tend to spend money as well, which is why Culver City has put a lot of their emphasis and has a similar program like this, why Long Beach has done this. Look at cities like Austin, Texas, which if it wasn't for their arts program, probably none of us would ever have heard of, unless you're from Texas, but Austin's famous worldwide because they've spent money on the arts. So it does come back, so it's, it's both quality of life for the residents, for all of us, for children, and for, for economic development. It's a tool for all of those things, so I think it's very important. I am not interested in talking about the car dealerships tonight, I would be open to that coming back at a later date for us to having a more full discussion, because I would like to see more of the economic analysis, that's not in our staff report, and to hear from the dealers themselves, but I, I'm very open to that, I think we should do that. Also, in terms of the affordable housing, they're also exempted, and I understand that because they tend to work on very tight margins, and we're trying to encourage affordable housing. However, if there's any way that that fund could be used for some art at affordable housing complexes, I think if there's any place in the city that needs public art, more than some commercial building, it's affordable housing complexes. So I would love to see, whether it's now or at some point in the future, that some of that money in that fund, you know, some small amount, because we don't have that many affordable housing projects, goes to meaningful art, or art programs at affordable housing complexes to enrich the lives of people who are otherwise disadvantaged. So that's something I would like to see voted on tonight, if we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Okay, well, I definitely support this. It was very interesting for me, actually, listening to my colleague, our colleague, Mr. Weaver's comments, because some of the things he was mentioning were things that have been the sort of, the sort of majority view in Glendale for, well, for generations, frankly. And, and so I was very happy to see, as I was listening to this, you're back, very happy to hear your comments, Mr. Weaver, because, because as you were speaking... very happy to hear your comments, Mr. Weber, because, because as you were speaking, I was thinking, okay, where's he going with this? I was very happy to see where you went with it, because one of the things I wanted to address, having grown up in this city, I know that when, what I've heard for years and years and years and years from our city government is, yes, there's a time and a place for everything, the arts are important, but we need to take care of our infrastructure, and so it's always been infrastructure versus the arts, or other development concerns versus the arts, or business versus the arts, or retail, this is just a, it's, it's a false contrast, and to hear the idea that we'll get around to it, what it's really saying is that for us in Glendale, the arts has never really been a priority. As Councilmember and Agency Chair Friedman points out, that is not so of our residents, we have a huge and dynamic arts community in Glendale, living in Glendale, working in Glendale, and owning private businesses in Glendale, galleries and so on, but as far as the city of, the city of Glendale, our city government has never prioritized the arts up there in such a way as we're considering right now, and even if you look at this as saying, you know, you can tell the city's taking this seriously because they're attaching, you know, a requirement to pay fees to it, well then, so be it. The fact of the matter is, this still provides an option, even when it comes right down to dollars and cents, it still provides an option for developers. They don't want to pay more, they don't have to pay more, they can stay right where they are, they want to pay that extra 1%, they can do that, and I too, hope that developers, even if they decide to contribute to the fund and not do an onsite project per se, will still continue to invest in their projects, and still will continue to make the arts important on their own, on their own project, on their own dime, but I think it is very important, if we want to see the, the future preservation of the existing arts venues we have, because their funding becomes a question from time to time, and we want to see innovation of new arts venues, new arts programmings, citywide, this is the, this is the way to do it, and as was pointed out by Councilmember Friedman, to do it in a way that does not place a burden on the general fund. So, that is why I have been supporting this, why I will continue to support this, I think it, it really does make a statement that people outside of Glendale are beginning to recognize that what is happening in our city with regard to arts and culture is a sea change. It is not that other councils have not had an interest, it's that other councils haven't moved it up into the, the stratosphere of priorities that I think the majority of our residents expect us to, so I'm ready to take that step, and I, I'm very, very happy that we have finally gotten this on the agenda and that we're going to be voting tonight. Actually, it is tonight, it's supposed to be our afternoon session, is this the same twenty-four-hour day? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank, Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I'll be brief, I support the proposal, and I look forward to working with the community and the staff to see how we're going to go about setting up a program that's going to be effective and, quite frankly, doesn't get bogged down in bureaucratic, I'll just leave it at that, I support the, I support the program, and we'll work out the details.
I also will be brief, I support it, I just want to throw a word of caution to all those arts groups who have been lobbying me already for expenditure of these funds, we're not there yet. In any event, we, I do support this, it's about time. So we have two council ordinances for introduction, and the third C is for agency.
And I would recommend that you put one C over till next week, you don't, I don't believe you want to adopt a resolution that establishes guidelines until you have the ordinances adopted.
Okay, Mr. Freedman.
So, Mr. Mayor, can these two be introduced simultaneously, A and B?
Yes.
In that case, then I will introduce the ordinances at 1A and B.
Okay, thank you, and one C will be continued to next week without further notice. Very good, is there a motion to adjourn for council? So moved.
Second.
So moved for agency.